It's gonna be just a couple of minutes late, we're gonna go ahead and start with the public hearing, she said to go ahead, and we'll finish that and then go into the regular meeting.
All right, thank you Mayor. The first application for consideration tonight is Z fourteen zero 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 dash zero zero five. This is application by Hunt Road LLC requesting reclassification of approximately two point one nine two acres, consisting of the western portion with parcel number zero zero four seven C zero two two. The present zoning classification of the affected property is Tipton General Business, and the reclassification shall be to the City of Tipton General Business. Mr. Crowe, would you just briefly like to describe what this re-zoning classification is and where the property is located?
Basically, it's just as he described, it was an annexation, part of an annexation. Anytime you have an annexation, bring your land into the city after rezoning, and the city rezones. Property is located between US eighty-two and Hunt Road, the portion is shown on the map, which y'all should have before you, and basically it's part of the process that's going on in that area. So, it did get approved a hundred percent by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
All right, I would like to now ask three questions of council concerning if you have any conflict of interest. Have any of the applicants or opponents to the application contributed at least two hundred and fifty dollars to any of the campaigns for election during the past two years?
No.
Do you or any members of your family own property that would be impacted by this reclassification application, whether it be a positive or negative impact?
No.
Do you or any members of your family have an interest in a business that would be impacted by this classification application, whether it be a positive or negative impact?
No.
Mr. Attorney, will you, once Julie gets here before she votes on this, you will ask her those questions separately?
Yes.
Okay. Is there another call point for actually?
Well, we'll vote on it later on. I think everyone has described by Mr. Crowe where this property is located and the request for rezoning. The first thing I would like to ask is there anybody here that would like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing no one wants to speak in favor, is anyone here that wants to speak in opposition for the application? Mayor, I see no public input on this rezoning application, so I ask that that public hearing be closed?
Yes, sir, it is.
The second application or public hearing we have tonight is application number Z fourteen zero 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 dash zero zero six. This is an application by Morrow Retail Ventures LLC. It's requesting reclassification of approximately fifty-seven point seven four seven acres, consisting of parcel number zero zero four six, zero zero six A, and the amount of fifty-six point five six acres, parcel number zero zero four seven C, zero two six, the amount of point nine eight acres, and the undeveloped western portion of Hunt Road, the amount of point two zero seven acres. The present zoning classification of the affected property is City of Tipton Warehouse Light Industrial, and the reclassification shall be to the City of Tipton General Business. Again, council, I'd like to ask the same three questions concerning a conflict of interest on this particular tract. Have any of these applicants or opponents of the application contributed at least two hundred and fifty dollars to any of the campaigns for election during the past two years?
No.
Do you or any members of your family own property that would be impacted by these classification applications, whether it be a positive or negative impact?
No.
Do you or any members of your family have an interest in a business that would be impacted by this classification application, whether it be a positive or negative impact?
No.
Mr. Crowe, again, if you could just briefly describe what this rezoning classification involves and where the property is located?
Yes, we received this application, again, as we said, from Morrow Ventures, and the actual tract of land, there's actually three tracts involved, and it's all, of course, the land that's north of Hunt Road, it's already in the city. It was currently zoned wholesale Light Industrial when it comes to the Tipton General Business, that's actually more in line with the development prospects of that area. It's also part of the same project that's going on in that area. Any questions? It was approved unanimously by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll first hear anybody here from the audience who would like to speak in favor of this rezoning application. Hearing no one here speaking in favor, is anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this rezoning classification? There would be no public input, I'd ask that that public hearing be closed.
Mr. Crowe.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Attorney. We will now call the regular meeting to order. Generally, we start with a prayer and a pledge, and I've asked Mr. Chris Parrott to give a prayer, he so kindly and graciously agreed to do so, and once he figures, finishes the prayer, we'll stand and face the flag, and we will say the pledge that will lead us to a wonderful, beautiful flag that stands for a beautiful country. Chris, will you be able to answer me, please?
Oh, Father, thank you so much for allowing us to meet here in a great city and a free country. Thank you for all the people that's been here before us and all the hard decisions they've made, people who've given their life and sacrificed for our country and that word freedom, which is not free. So, thank y'all for allowing us to be here. Also thankful for a great year serving the city, and for the Tipton City to be here for assistance. Now be with us here, and those watching at home, in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. You hadn't missed much, we went up with a public hearing, and the attorney is gonna run those questions by you when we get to that point in the meeting. And we've just finished the pledge, and now we're ready for the approval of the council agenda.
Okay, thank you. Apologize for being late.
Oh, Mr. Attorney? I request that item twenty-four be removed from the agenda tonight, we ran us a little snag to the back of the room. I'm already presenting. Okay, item number twenty-four will be removed.
I make the motion to accept the agenda presented minus item number twenty-four.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none in favor, please sit if I raise your right hand, saying aye. That is unanimous. Now we have a time that we enjoy, where we listen to people that put us here, and that we work for, and that's our citizens. Mr. Rowan, was there any citizen, anything to talk?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Ms. Jill Barjow.
I thought I saw who that was by there, but I can't see through my new glasses. Tell us where you live, just for the record.
I live at four oh nine North Park Avenue, Tipton, Georgia, and I'm here today regarding Dreamit Gymnastics and twenty-one twenty-three Yang Clay Drive, the road paving issue. I am here on behalf of Jay Bryan, my husband, about the road paving at our business, that we've been around for fifteen years. I know he's been here to speak with you, and I think he's normally a very patient man. In August, I know he came and spoke to the group, and I think, you know, presented information about how we were promised a road fourteen years ago. Larry, I know you were in that meeting, and he was told he'd get a phone call in a couple weeks. He came into the September meeting and presented information, and he was told he would be contacted in a couple weeks. Did not come to the October meeting, and did not come to the November meeting, and it's now December first, and he's still not gotten a call from anybody. So, I guess, you know, I'm here to kind of find out where we are. We had a wonderful event, Mayor, you were there, on Gin Breaker Day.
Yeah.
The weather was inclement, we had a wonderful group of parents from, we brought people in from Moultrie, from Thomasville, people from Baldasta came in to hear this wonderful motivational speaker, and the road was, I mean, it had rained, it was awful. So, you know, today, driving into work, you know, felt like I was a jackhammer on my way to, you know, so I'm just kind of trying to find out where we are. He could not be here today, so I'm kind of trying to find out what's going on and where we are.
Larry, you can speak to that, please, sir.
I'd be happy to, Mayor, the road is located up in the county, it's not in the city limits, it's a county road, and the county needs to address the issue.
I must be confused, I thought Jay Bryan was here, we just decided we would do something about it.
We talked about the possibility of annexing, or we didn't discuss it, we thought about annexing that road in to the city limits, but then I think we found out that was not a possibility.
Okay, but the road is not annexed, that's correct.
The Dreamit Gymnastics property is in the city limits, the red roadway is outside, it's in the county, it's not in the city limits.
And if I remember correctly, the council that was there at that time, which is none of the five of us, had promised that if you would annex your property in, come in, some will be done about the road. And I think that's where we were, and I think all five of us wanted to do something, but now what do we do?
We have researched that issue, we have no documentation whatsoever that that discussion was ever held with City Council.
Well, we need to do something, these folks bring a lot of revenue, economic development into our city. I mean, we need to do something. I mean, I understand it's in the county, and that's all good, well, but what can we do, because the city is obviously benefiting from what they do.
I think that you'll have to get, talk with the county, and it's their road, and if we want to do something to something that they own, then I think we'll have to get their permission first.
Can I ask a question? Can they, I know, we talked about annexation of the road, which would, could only be done if the property in or across the street annexed, is that correct? Okay, then the road would come in with everything. But let me ask you this, can the road just be, if the county were willing to just deed the road, is that the same thing as an annexation, or is that a different procedure, and is that a possibility if we went to the county and said, look, just deed this stretch of road to us, and we receive it in payment, is that an option?
I think it may be. I think they could deed over the property to us.
Is there utilities under that dirt road?
That ain't going down.
Don't quote me on this, I know the TV's running, but I think all the utilities out there are overhead, except for maybe water.
When was Jay Bryan here?
August and September.
August and September.
He was here prior to that, too, though.
Yeah. I mean, we've been in the, we've been there officially fourteen, we started building at this time fourteen, more than fourteen years ago. So, this is, we've actually been in the two thousand one, June one, two thousand one was the first day of operation, but, I mean, you know, it was built and completed and going through the process for, so it's been fourteen years.
Let me offer a suggestion, and others may want to pipe in here, too, but as we approach whatever we're gonna do, I'm gonna request that plus, minus, or indifferent, that y'all stay in contact with these two people about what's going on, whether it's good news, bad news, or nothing, at least on a bi-weekly level, and let's get this thing put away if we can. Y'all feel the same way?
How could we, Mayor, how could we go about having that discussion with the county? I guess we'd have to decide if they were willing to donate, would we, and could we accept it, and how can we initiate that conversation?
Good question.
That's easy to have a nine o'clock meeting with the county manager, and more than I can ask somebody to them.
That'd be a good start.
I'm sure they'd love to deed it over.
Absolutely.
Let's do what we can.
Just came up with this, with the effort, but let's just stay in touch about bi-weekly, and that would help to communicate that, kind of, even if it's not going anywhere, at least, you know, we're still working on it.
Yeah, we're just kind of...
Because you waited so long.
It's been, it's been a difficult process.
Now, it's not the other county's problem anymore, it's ours.
Well, I mean, it's...
I know there's a different city manager, and a different attorney, but now we're here, and we see the problem, and I was there, and there was a ton of fuss, I'm telling you on something. They brought in the Tipton, Vicki, when Vicki was talking to different people, y'all will stay here and eat some of what we're spending the night here, and a bunch of them were eating here, a bunch of them brought in ball gas here, and heck, that one night probably paid for the road. It paid with it.
It's about two point seven miles, and that was, you know...
That was a pile of people.
It was a great motivational thing, they even brought her to school.
How long was it?
Two point seven miles.
The road?
No, I mean, not two point seven.
Point two seven.
Point, yeah.
Yeah.
It's less than a third of a mile.
It was a quarter of a mile cost to pay, because you gotta do a DOG space, right? I just want y'all to know this is a mountain, right? It's gonna be a big number.
It's a very large number.
Exactly.
Based on the most recent bid we have received.
What, three, three hundred thousand?
Yeah, that's a pretty good ballpark.
I mean, you could be looking at three hundred thousand dollars. There's a couple of other roads in the city limits. I'm saying, what I'm saying is, you got other, I mean...
Well, now, there's also the alleyways...
Deeding this thing in and taking it over, they gonna spend three hundred thousand dollars on the road.
Well, now, there's also alleyways that we have paved, that, I know we haven't spent that kind of money on, and they, it's a good, solid foundation. In fact, an example of that would be Murray Lane. We've got utilities under it, and it's, you know, it's beveled like that, and it's a good surface. It would probably give them good, many years of good service until we can try to find some money to maybe do it right, you know, with curb and gutter, make it really attractive, but at least get rid of the dirt road aspect of it. But we could also go in there and, you know, pack down, finally crush a run, you know, that would be a precursor to paving, until we get there.
Had Crush already done up there once, and it made it worse?
I think that was something Crush that was done, like, but I think that was like fourteen years ago.
Yeah, if you do it right, and you do it good enough, it'll hold, but, I mean, we gotta do something.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with you, Chris, we have to do something, this has been dragging on for quite a while, and...
Yes.
And sitting on this council, I just feel like, you were there, so you saw the crowd that was there.
I saw it.
And to show our appreciation, we just need to do something about it.
We do.
We need to do something, get something done. I mean...
What type of projects are we gonna eliminate to do this project? That's what y'all said.
I'll get with the ESG, and we'll do some testing out there, take some core samples and see what kind of bases out there to work with, because right now, I don't know, all I know is it's mud, and Jimmy knows, I've been down that road many, 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 many times, spending money at gymnastics.
And the county is just not receptive to paving this whole stretch of road.
They have a typical section for that designed, I don't know where it is on the paving list, but that's all I can tell you, that's what I've been told.
Can I place Wes and Johnny on a committee to take this one step further than the board to work with Larry, whomever, would that be appropriate?
You can.
Well, then, that's what I like to do. Johnny's in your district, right?
Yeah.
Wes, you bring up some good points, and you're involved in it, so you and Wes will take this thing.
Okay, let's get on.
See, you can contact Larry, and remember the bi-weekly, let him know something, do something we're working on.
Yeah, we just, and we need to make sure it does, like, kind of the road's been scraped, so now the road's been scraped, and the water kind of runs into the front of our, you know, so we need to kind of keep that into, in thought process, too, it's like our front, where our drive is, and where our parking lots is, and where our, you know, it's kind of now that kind of tends to be a little lake, yeah, yeah, that kind of tends to be a lake since we've kind of started scraping, and it's affected us that way, but...
Let us work hard for this point, we will stay in communication with you consistently.
And I appreciate that, and again, I'm not trying to ask for something that, you know, we're just trying to follow up, and I think we've been, you know, he's been patient, I think we've been patient for a long time, but it's, you know, when it's affecting your business, and it's affecting, you know, people coming to you and not being able to get to you yet, that makes a difference.
And I want you to know that there's not anybody sitting on this board, nor Larry and them, that they can get, it's just that it's not in writing, and that's why it's so important, you know, the days of the handshake are over.
Good old boy stuff is gone, thank God.
Yeah, but we're gonna tell you, we're gonna tell you tonight, we're gonna do something that's on record.
I appreciate that.
We're being filmed, we're being broadcast, it's something that's gonna happen, and we're gonna stay in contact.
I appreciate that very much.
And two folks that I've placed here...
Appreciate that, and also trust...
Any other four could have done it, but the two will hop right on this thing and stay in contact with you.
Okay, thank you.
I know you're having, but it best, he said, you know, this happened on somebody else's watch, but you know, the longer it goes, it's really y'all's watch now, or he said something to that effect. That hit home with all five of us, I believe.
We can hear the good and the bad, unfortunately.
That's right. Thank you for coming, and hope that in the future you'll be coming up and thanking us.
I appreciate y'all allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much, Jill.
Staff will be glad to work with you all to make sure that your meetings are properly advertised in each county, you know, since it's a community.
Now, y'all, the committees have to do all that.
All committees, subcommittees have to?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They do.
Just get with Jessica Ryan, we'll help you with that.
Yeah, so does that mean when I put something in committee like that, it means they've got to advise, go through all the proper channels if it was a public meeting?
Yes, sir.
And the rest of us can show up to it, too, according to?
It's a committee meeting, it's open to the public, that's why...
Well, let's remember that, because many of us want to come to any of these things, if legitimate, you used to, you couldn't have that forum.
Does the site have to be posted as well? Yes. So, if we're gonna have a lunch meeting or a little subcommittee meeting, we gotta go post at the bakery that we're gonna meet there on lunch?
Yeah.
Just asking, just want to be sure.
So, you have bakery and here.
And here, okay, interesting, okay.
Time and hour changing.
And make sure you put on your, Julie's by a lot.
Actually, it would be at City Hall, and at the bakery.
Mayor, since we're gonna be discussing this with the county, does the county have to make this as well?
I'll tell you what, let's let Larry play that role.
No pun intended.
Not a pun on there, but let's let him guide us as to what, when, and if we need to get with the county, because you know a lot probably coin.
He'll report back to the committee, he'll report back?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good question. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
At this point, can I ask for a little break here, and we do a special presentation?
Well, certainly you can.
As y'all know, we've been...
Wait, now, has that changed the agenda? Did we do that later?
It's a special presentation, it's answered.
He didn't answer.
Call the citizen input.
Yes, citizen input.
Okay, this is part of citizens, okay.
Did they sign in?
He's so bad, so...
Will you answer a question, Lois?
I think Larry said this was citizens' input.
Yeah, okay, everybody could have, it says...
Anyway, we've been with ESG, their maintenance operations of the city of Tipton for about two and a half years now, two and two and a half years, somewhere around there, and when they recall last year, they were kind enough to come down, and Mayor, Council, I asked y'all to come over here, because we have another special, special check for you this time.
Wow.
But the last rebate check we got from ESG was about three hundred ninety-five thousand dollars, from the numbers I hope, and with that said, I'll save the surprise for Natasha, so she can make a real nice picture of it, and then if you and Scott want to come up and make the presentation, Mayor, Council, y'all want to come over and see Chris, and she's gonna do a nice picture.
There's your road before she goes. There's the road, Larry.
Before you get too excited, it's enterprise funds.
Enterprise funds.
Well, my road is gonna be important.
Call it enterprise fund.
Yeah.
There's the number, Mayor.
There's the number.
Whoa, I could use that right now.
I will remind you that this enterprise fund is going to be used for water and sewer, this does not include any of the public works functions that we recently contracted up. And as Dan said, I asked the public, I said, how do y'all do this? And they said, well, that's called a D S O S.
Four hundred forty-three thousand nine hundred ninety-one, wow, isn't that...
How's that, Lois?
I like it.
You like that?
Last time, we had to do that.
Thank you.
I can't just translate, right? That's a lot of line. Thank y'all. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mayor, if I could just say one quick thing?
You may.
Is, you know, a lot of the credit for this, you know, one, I want to compliment Scott and the team here, we've got a great team, but it's a team effort all the way around. We couldn't do it without y'all support, of course, Mayor. Larry's been a tremendous partner in this as well, he's made sure we had the tools we needed to be successful. Lois over here, she's a tremendous part of that team as well, she's worked with us through a lot of this, and so it's not just an ESG effort, it's a team of people coming together to get a lot done. Larry hit on it, a big part of these savings has been due to what we've tried to do, is take the staff and all we have, and really work with their skill sets and train them to do a lot more stuff ourselves versus hiring, you know, other people to do it, and then a part of it's working smart, and Scott can also add.
Yeah, I would just go back to what Dan touched on, the training aspect of it. Our work groups, particularly in our cities, tend to be compartmentalized, each individual has a set of specific skills, and they, if the work is available for them to exercise those skills, they do, if not, they're probably not as productive as we would like them, and what we've done is bring in a lot of our corporate resources, and people from other cities that are this size have similar type infrastructure, and we've cross-trained virtually everybody in the work group. I'm very proud to say that of the original group that we got over, that came over with C and D and the Waterways Department before, we've got over sixteen certifications now, we've got a number of these gentlemen and women who have put in just a tremendous amount of personal time getting the coursework, meeting the prerequisites to get their state licensures, and then we've been very successful doing that, and that's a testament to the quality of people that we have here, and frankly, their desire to improve themselves and be an asset to us here, so we're, there's at least forty people involved in that number right there, all of them contributing in their very own, unique, and special ways, we're very proud of our folks here.
Well, I want to add to that, I was out at, I was out at Lowe's the other night, I bumped into one of our former city employees, and I knew that he'd gone with ESG, and I said, how are they treating? And of course, I asked that question a good bit, even though I already know the answer. He was happy as a war, he had just gotten cross-trained, I told you who he was, you knew who I'm talking about. Happy, his wife was with him, honey, you were out there, and his wife, they said, it's the best thing ever happened to us, so we also want to thank Larry, because this was Larry's brainchild to bring ESG in. Of course, when I heard your name, started with us, know his dad, it's gotta be good stuff right there, so it wasn't a hard sell, but thank y'all so much, from the five of us, we just appreciate everything that y'all do, and what you've done for our former employees, and for all of Tipton, our patrons, so thank you, thank you, thank you. And where's that check, Larry?
It got a lot smaller.
Say, Mayor, I almost didn't make it in the door, Lois cornered me, and I had to get around.
I'm sure of that, I'm sure of that.
Good financial environment right there.
That's right. Thank y'all. God bless. Okay, well, that'll complete the citizen input, is that correct? We'll move on now to approval of the minutes for the November third, twenty fourteen regular council meeting, and the November twentieth, twenty fourteen workshop, they called me.
So moved.
Second.
I've got the motion to second, any further discussion?
I think, I saw what I thought was a mistake, but let me ask about this. In the minutes of the November 3rd meeting, the night we met at A I D, if you go to the second page under the award proposal, I was thinking that Chris had not approved that and was not, I can't remember. Is that, is that correct?
He did the award proposal for the truck, he did not approve.
I'm just getting that mixed up. Okay, I'm sorry about that, okay. I just want to make sure I could...
Julie, let me get to that, because I looked through, I didn't see where they had the error.
I was thinking that it was...
I'll look at that.
I was thinking that it was not approved for both of them, but I could have just, not, you were remembering correctly, just make sure that...
It was just one.
Okay, all right, that's my mistake, and I hold it, okay. Other than that, Mr. Terrell did not approve an item. Right, I remember that.
Right, I did not vote for the articulated dump. That was a $270,000 dump.
That's what I didn't vote for. I was thinking it was both of those, so I got mixed up, that's my...
The garbage was Johnny, so that was just two of them.
Right.
Okay, no problem, I just wanted to clarify that, okay.
Okay, thank you, Julie, for pointing that out. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please sit over right in your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's you now.
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to move on now into the consent agenda. Consent agenda is what we put together so that we can take a vote on a lot of items, but we don't just rush over these items. We discuss them, workshops, emails, whatever, we see a lot of this stuff. But I need to ask my board members, are there any of these consent agenda items that you want to have removed, that you'd rather speak to separately? Or do you want to keep all these on those things? Miss Rollins, this goes from item number two all the way to... Where?
321.
16?
321.
I started to say that, but that also includes the zoning issues?
Yes, sir.
Can we break them up by category like, you know, two, three and four are about the turn?
No, sir.
Can I do that?
Well, if you, if you choose, but you don't have to. If you, if you want, pull something off and discuss it and do that.
Any one item that...
Or you don't want, okay.
Do any two items you don't want compiled all of this from a big vote? Please feel free to put it out, but we need to know now.
Mr. Mayor, I do have just a small question on item number 17.
Okay.
And this will be just really quick one for Larry, is this the time to do that now? Just a quick question.
Yes.
Okay, on the disposal of surplus properties, how do we advertise that?
Well, what we've been doing is putting it on government, but what we have to do according to the state law, to be compliant with state laws, we now have to advertise that in the local newspaper.
Okay.
We have to list all the items that are going to be surplus on there and then the time, date and time that the bids are due or the open, closed.
And who makes the call, the surplus something?
Up to $30,000, the city manager has the authority to do that, that was given to him by council. Anything over $30,000, we need approval of council for surplus.
Okay.
When do y'all normally do that?
From time to time, when we get a surplus property that comes up, like jumped out police cars or, you know, just equipment that's worn out. That we know don't have a need for, the larger items.
I just appreciate it out.
Okay, thank you, Larry, that's all I have to say.
Now, and I'm just, I'm just doing this to stay on the same side for all of us. This goes all the way through 21. So that would include the two items that you spoke of, that you asked us to questions on.
Yes, and so that would probably, Julie would need to be asked a conflict of interest question, so those probably may need to be taken out.
I think they need to be separate.
Right.
And that will be item number 19, 20 and 21?
Just 19 and 21.
Yes, yeah, 19 and 21. So will that be okay with everybody as we extract 19 and 21 and then get the rest of them as a consent agenda?
Can I need a motion for that effect?
Yeah, I need a motion that effect.
Okay, I move to accept only the consent agenda items two through 18.
And also?
And 20.
Second.
I've got a motion, second, and further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, please sit over right in your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Well, I'll accept a motion for the consent agenda, items two through 19. Let's give 18 and item 20.
Got that.
Item two through 18 and...
We just did that.
Well, we just did.
Well, we just made the motion, didn't we?
And they voted.
And we had, we already voted?
Yeah.
You said aye.
Don't excuse me while I look at that.
You said it with a glass.
I'm delighted about that check, man.
We need to discuss that.
You said it with a glass.
21.
Yeah, now, now we're going to discuss item 19 and 21.
Yes, sir.
I think yes.
All right, Ms. Smith.
Yes.
I want to ask you three questions related to two different applications for rezoning classification. The first reclassification request was made by Hunt Road LLC, application Z 14 00005. It involves 2.192 acres out there by Hunt Road. I think you've seen where that property is. I think it's also been in your packet, the workshop. The other application is Z 14 00006. It's applied by Borrow Retail Ventures LLC requesting rezoning, a reclassification of the zoning to 57.747 acres. The Hunt Road property was going to go from Tiff County G B to City of Tifton General Business. And the Borrow Retail Ventures LLC was going from City of Tifton Warehouse High Industrial to City of Tifton General Business. First question I'd like to ask you is, has any of these applicants or opponents to the application contributed at least $250 to any of the campaign collection during the past two years?
No.
Do you or any members of your family own property that would be impacted by these classification applications, whether it be a positive or negative impact?
No.
Do you or any members of your family have an interest in a business that would be impacted by this classification application, whether it be a positive or negative impact?
No.
Okay. So now we have to take both of those together, 19 and 21, and vote on them together. Okay, I'll accept the motion.
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion, second, and further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, please sit over right in your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is you now.
Thank you.
We'll move now to the resolutions.
Yes, sir. These two resolutions are alcoholic beverage license requests that were not on the workshop because they have not been submitted. The fact that we do not plan to have a workshop for December, I thought it would be appropriate to put it on the alcohol tonight. So the first one is the Pit Stop Barbecue, they're requesting an amended alcohol license to add Denise Straight, who is the daughter of the owner, as one of the managers. I ran a background check on Ms. Straight and she had no violations, so recommending approval of that license.
What was that?
The Pit Stop Barbecue.
Okay, okay.
To add a manager.
Okay.
I need a motion.
Still the same type of beverages being sold, which changes the manager?
Well, we're actually not changing, we're adding one because the mother is not able to be there as much as she used to be.
Okay, I'm trying to get to that now.
That's item 22.
What page is that on in our packet? Because I'm trying to get there. Well, it's about page 210, something like that. Around 210.
214. Oh, mine.
Are you old fashioned like me?
You got to stretch your legs out?
I'm just using them.
Were you not able to pull up your bookmarks?
I'm not using them.
Yeah, I got them, I was thinking... Because I couldn't pull my bookmark. No, I didn't get my bookmark, because I was having to go by the page number. I make the motion that we approve that resolution for pit stop amending their alcoholic beverage license.
Second.
I have a motion, second, and further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, please sit over right in your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
That's you now. Item number 23?
Item number 23 is for a new alcoholic beverage license for the spot, which is where the Anchor Lounge used to be on Commerce Way. Sonia Howard is taking over that bar. She is also the owner of what used to be Lil's, is now called Sonia's Place. And of course, I did not run a background check for her on this one because I just ran one for Sonia's Place this past month. So there, she has nothing since, at all since 1989. I don't know if Buddy's here to tell us if there have been any issues with Sonia's Place.
Doesn't speak up.
The staff is recommending approval. They have no reason not to.
Okay.
I'll accept my motion.
I'll make a motion for resolution 23.
I second it.
I'll move to second, any further discussion?
I have a quick question for Ms. Rollins. The amended application fee was $1,100.
Yes.
But Ms. Howard's is $600.
She's only getting beer.
Okay, so that's okay.
The other one was beer and wine.
It didn't break it down in the sheet here, so I said, okay.
Would you like me to do that? I'd be happy to do that.
No, I don't want any extra work on it, that's why, I just wanted to ask why there was a difference there.
Just for the future, if you want to know, look on the resolution, I do break it down there.
Okay.
About, close to the bottom of the page.
I got you, on the actual legal document.
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Yeah, we got a motion, second, and further discussion. All in favor, please sit over right in your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
That's you now. Now, we're going into other bits, board opponents or reappointments?
Yes, sir, I have two, two reappointments from the K T Beautiful Board. Jimmy Deal and Donna Carter, both were still reappointed. We still have two vacancies on zoning board of appeals. You have an application from Curtis Akins. He is interested in serving on the board of appeals. We kind of talked about his background at the workshop, and you all were interested in appointing him.
If we want him, can we go ahead and vote on him tonight?
Yes, sir, sure.
Is there anyone who wants to make the motion?
I'll make the motion to reappoint Jimmy Deal and Ms. Donna Carter to the K T Beautiful Board.
Second.
I have a motion, second, and further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, please sit over right in your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Now, does somebody want to do a motion for Mr. Akins?
I make the motion that we appoint Curtis Akins to the zoning board of appeals.
Second.
I've got a motion, second, and further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, please sit over right in your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
That is you now.
That's it.
And is there executive session tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that will be discussed.
Real estate, and Mayor, we have to ask you to reduce yourself.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make the motion to go into executive session for real estate matters.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please sit over right in your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
And at this point, I will excuse myself, and it's this...
Everyone else will take action?
Okay.